Good evening, and I'd like to call to order our October 16th, 2018, Pickwa City Commission Meeting. Let us stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have our roll call, please?
Mayor Heinz.
Here.
Commissioner Martin.
Here.
Commissioner Vogt.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Commissioner Short.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any announcements this evening?
Good evening, my name is Ruth Kuhn, and I live on Park Avenue. I'm here this evening to make about three announcements, and I think they're important because these announcements are about citizens in Pickwa who are all volunteering to make Pickwa a better place. The first thing is, of course, I mentioned this before when I was up here, that the Friends of the Library are hosting the gala, the 10th anniversary of our wonderful Fort Pickwa Plaza. We don't want people to forget that beautiful building because it has been, I can't believe it's been 10 years. So this is kind of a celebration of remembering back in 2008, the restoration and the reopening of one of the treasures in our community. That event is going to be on November the 16th at the Fort Pickwa Plaza. The Dayton Philharmonic Orchestra will be here, under the direction of Neil Gittleman, and that's very unusual. So we are very excited to have him with the orchestra here in town. The tickets are available at Don Smith's Alston Manor's Flower Box at 1622 Washington Avenue, or you could call there, (773) 2675, and get a ticket. The second thing is, the Friends of the Pickwa Parks, they are embarking on a wonderful beautification project on the slopes on Route 36. This, of course, this project, or this area, has plagued our community for, I don't know how many years, oh, probably over 20, 25 years, as to what to do with those slopes. We have come up, our committee has come up with a reasonable-priced project, landscaping project, and we are sending out letters now and doing a lot of publicity about that fundraiser that will begin with blood planting of six, we hope, six, we have four trees donated. We need another two donors. We accept some donations for two more trees. That planting of those trees will begin the end of October. If anybody is interested in donating to that project, it's Friends of the Pickwa Parks, Post Office, Box 270. We are 501(c)(3), so all donations are tax deductible. The last thing is, I think you have all noticed the beautiful, beautiful, colorful mural downtown Pickwa at the corner of High and Main in one of the quads on Brian Quinter's building. It is absolutely beautiful, and we are so happy to have that now in our downtown. That was due to a number of grants from some very local, some very generous and local foundations. So that was part of Main Street Pickwa's Beautification Committee. So those are my three announcements, and again, I wanted to tell you, this is what the citizens of Pickwa are doing to improve our community, so I thought you would be interested in hearing about all these projects. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements this evening?
My name's DJ Burns. I'm sure you guys have been seeing my signs creeping up around town. I came to thank you guys because about two years ago, when I first moved to town, I came into this very building, and I think I was wearing a hat, or shirt, something else, probably shouldn't have been dressed like this. But I came in and I asked about the status of the Pickwa Mill Building. I said, "What's going on with it, you know? Why isn't this happening, this happening, this happening?" And Mr. Huff was very patient with me. He explained the matters at hand, and I left learning that I had a lot to learn about local government and how things operated. And a few weeks later, I got invited to the Pickwa Government Academy. And I had a front row seat, I did all 10 classes, I attended every event, and it became clear to me, you know, I'd ask, I'd be at these events, and I'd ask, you know, "What's going on on a local level? Like, if you had a magic wand, what would you have?" And it didn't matter, Democrat, Republican, or whatever, they talked about having more money, you know? They said, like, "We feel like, on a local level," and I'm sure everybody here can relate, that they've basically been given, you know, a half packet of jelly for four pieces of toast. And that government experience taught me that, you know, when I, I live over in 3A, that side El Parkway, I think something's about to happen to it, thankfully, but that stretch right in front of the church, it's miserable. And driving up, you know, if I was less educated, I would have came in here storming up, you know, "Why aren't you guys paying?" I knew, you guys know about that. It's just a matter of having the funds. And so, in June, I'm involved in the Local Democratic Party. We had a guy from Troy, he dropped out, and we didn't have really anybody to run in the district. And I'm a resident of Pickwa, I haven't been here a long time, I know many people here are looking at me like, "Who the hell is this guy?" But I stepped into the race, and I did it because of my experience in the Pickwa Government Academy. And, you know, Democrat, and since July, I've spent my time knocking on doors, talking to voters. I've been from the gerrymandered part of Huber Heights and Tip City, all the way to New Madison. I've talked to voters of all stripes, and we're not as divided as people would say. And I know a lot of you guys, if you look at my platform, you might not agree with everything, but I would hope that you guys would see the value in having some, a state representative from Pickwa that will be in Pickwa. Like, I will not be an absentee, I have no choice but to be the most active state representative in the history of the district, because otherwise, the Republicans will get rid of me in the next reelection. And I came here to say that, you know, I'm not, I'm not a radical, I'm sure as my opponents will try to paint me as. I voted for Republicans. I voted for Ms. Wall this year because of past, past experience with some voter registration. You treated me fairly, and I'll never forget that, and I'll vote for you every time you run for anything. You know, I care about this city, I care about the future, I care about getting local leaders the resources that they need. And I look at it like, you guys got robbed. You guys got robbed by the Kasich administration. He's up there bragging about a $2.6 billion rainy day fund for a failed presidential run that's about to happen again, and it came in the backs of this community. And I see what you guys have been trying to do. I talked with Justin Sommer, I see the beauty that's gonna come right in the riverfront. But we need money, and we need funds, and, you know, Republican, Democrat, whatever, it's not, it's not us that robbed you guys. You know, those policies didn't come from the Democratic side. And if you don't agree with me, that's fine, I'll work with you. And I just came here today to say that I care about government. I believe in rooms like this, and I believe in what you guys are doing. And when I win this election, which is gonna happen, I will work with you hand in hand and get you the resources that you need. And if you guys have any questions about my candidacy, I'd love to answer them right now.
DJ, we encourage the Government Academy participants to get involved on a local level with committees and so forth. We didn't know you were gonna jump straight to the state legislature.
Well, like-
Must have been a really good session we had.
Yeah, it happened, and there was another guy that was interested, but as you might imagine, things haven't been going well for people on our side for a while, and this, this area has lacked a strong Democratic message. And because of that, local governments have suffered. Like, you guys are in here struggling because the Kasich administration robbed you guys. And my opponent has nothing to say about it. And, you know, some people might not be interested in what I have to say, but I care. I care deeply. And, you know, I've read my history book. Pickwa used to be the most populous city in Miami County. It was first. We should be, we should be the county seat, no offense to Troy, but that's the stuff I dream about, and like, that's the stuff I'm working for. And I know, I know the instance is to write me off as a lunatic or whatever, but go drive around Pickwa, see the work that I've been doing. My signs are in every single neighborhood in this city, and they're for a reason. And it's because my message is resonating with the people here. And I don't tolerate Pickwa slander, none of that. I dream of building, getting you guys the resources, getting that lock nine built, and, you know, having stuff like the Mum Festival, having stuff like the Strawberry Festival. Like, that's the stuff we need to bring this community together. And I apologize for skipping to the head of the class, it's an opportunity that fell in my lap. I understand that there are things that I don't know, I don't know what I don't know about government. I get that. But I care, and I learn, and I've studied this stuff, and I can't win without your help. And if you guys go to your friends, and you have my back, and you can get me into some of these clubs right here, we can win, and we can get you the money that you need. And, you know, 'cause even if I do lose, you guys are still gonna have to deal with me. Like, I'm still gonna be out here, I still care, you're still gonna see me out at events, and as long as I live here, I will push Pickwa to where it needs to be, and I will participate in anything, because I see what you guys are trying to do, and it's just about a lack of resources.
DJ, thank you for your passion, and thank you for your passion for our community, and appreciate your message to us today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys. God bless.
Okay, any other announcements? If not, we will move to the next piece of our agenda, which is the Fall Resident Pride Awards. It's always wonderful to be able to celebrate our resident pride, and these are the ones that we are celebrating this fall. The first one is Richard and Teresa, and I'm not gonna pronounce this, Borgerding, I believe that's right. Are they here tonight by chance? Okay, this is 909 Caldwell Street. And the next one is Tiffany and Eddie Harvey, 316 Wilson Avenue. Are Tiffany and Eddie here? I don't, are they? No? Okay, I didn't think so. And the next one is Hume and Company CPAs, 308 Water Street. And the next one is Jerry Hewnold, 216 North Downing Street. And finally, Michelle and Steve Stahl, 1007 West Green Street. Are they here this evening, or any of our Resident Pride Awards winners here this evening? Well, even so, we give thanks for the energy that they have put for their homes, we give thanks for the ways that they have made Pickwa more beautiful, and congratulations to all of the winners for this fall. And now we move to the consent agenda.
There's one item on the consent agenda tonight. It's the approval of the minutes from the September 18, 2018 Regular City Commission Meeting.
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? The consent agenda passes. And now we move to new business. The first is a first reading, ordinance number 14-18.
An emergency ordinance amending Chapter 111 of the Pickwa Municipal Code, Peddlers and Solicitors.
Ms. Wall will provide the staff report.
Thank you. This chapter governs the peddlers and solicitors in the city of Pickwa, which is primarily your door-to-door sales. Currently, it also involves panhandling for a registration requirement based upon current Supreme Court case law regarding First Amendment speech. Seeking to amend this ordinance that would eliminate the panhandling requirements, leaving in place all of the door-to-door sales. I would also ask that the three reading rule be waived in order to put this into effect.
Do we have a motion to waive the three reading-
So move.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, that has been approved. Do we have any questions about the ordinance from the commission? Do we have any, oh, go ahead.
I was gonna say, I move to adopt ordinance number 14-18.
Let me see if there's any, any public comment on this ordinance? Okay, if not, Commissioner Vogt has moved to adopt it. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, the ordinance passes. And now we move to Resolution Number R-126-18.
A resolution awarding a contract to LJ DeWes Company Incorporated for the ADA ramp installation project.
I'll call on Ms. Havenor to provide the staff report.
Thank you. This summer, the Public Works Department began doing some, what was intended to be patchwork in the historic East Pickwa District, and as they got further into their patching work, it was determined that those streets actually needed to be resurfaced. So they went ahead and did that. So this would be to follow up and go ahead and put the ADA compliant handicap ramps in. We did publicly bid this, five bids were received. The lowest bidder was DNF Enterprise. We had never heard of them before, so upon doing reference checks, they did not come back favorable, so we are requesting that the project be awarded to the second lowest bidder, and we have worked with them on multiple occasions, and they do a good job.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission on this resolution? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move to adopt Resolution R-126-18.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Okay, the resolution passes. And now we move to Resolution Number R-127-18.
A resolution to award a contract to Outdoor Enterprises for the Wayfinding Program.
Mr. Smeazing will provide the staff report.
Thank you. The Wayfinding Program is a comprehensive system of signage that includes primary and secondary directional and informational signs. It also includes facility and park identification signs, as well as community gateway signs. The system provides signage that will make it easier to locate destinations throughout the community, and it'll also promote the consistent and positive image of Pickwa through the use of the city's logo and branding colors. Phase one of the Wayfinding Program included the downtown area and was completed earlier this year, and phase two will include the installation of directional signs citywide, as well as the installation of facility and park identification signs, along with prominent gateway signs to be located at the main entryways in the community. The City of Pickwa 2017-2021 Strategic Plan Document identifies the implementation of the city wayfinding program as a community appearance goal, and as such, the funding for the project was included in the 2018 budget. The staff report provides a breakdown of the amounts allocated to each department and the sign types that will be installed, including $312,400 in the streets budget. That includes the citywide directional signs, as well as the Public Works Facility ID sign, and also the prominent gateway signs that would be all the main entryways to the community. $40,600 would come from the water budget, that's for the Facility ID sign at the water treatment plant, and also for signage at the auxiliary or satellite facilities such as pump stations. $9,100 would be for the wastewater facility ID sign from their budget. $31,600 is the electric budget, and that's for a Facility ID sign primarily at their substations, the solar array site, and locations of that nature. $7,400 is for the municipal government complex, that would include a Facility ID sign out in the front of this building. And $136,400 would be for parks ID signs at all the community and neighborhood parks, there would be a prominent ID sign located there. And then finally, $5,100 of the amount indicated is for the Municipal Airport Facility ID sign. A request for bids was advertised publicly and mailed directly to prospective bidders, including both local and regional vendors qualified to do the work. And in response to this, we received three bids to the bid solicitation. The bid tabulations are included with the staff report for your reference. The low bidder responding to the project was Outdoor Enterprises, and they have agreed to a slightly reduced scope of work that will modify the total project cost to be in line with the budget amount that is available for the project. We've done the reference checks and looked at some of the work performed by Outdoor Enterprises, as well as their sign vendor that they would be working with as a subcontractor, and we're very pleased with the quality of work that they've performed elsewhere, and would recommend them being the contractor for this project. If approved, the project will begin this year, and it will extend into 2019, with an anticipated completion date of June of next year. Happy to respond to any questions you might have.
I notice on this schematic that you give us, of the different places, you have no sign on there, or no, nothing for the Pittsburgh Sports Complex. You have the recreational trail, you got Fountain Park, but there's nothing for Pittsburgh.
So the sheet you have in front of you is the sign family, and so what it includes is a typical sign type for each of the different sign types included in the project. So while there isn't one shown there specific to Pittsburgh, Pittsburgh will have a Facility ID sign at both the entryways. And so it would, it would be multiple pages if we were to show every one of those signs. As part of the project process, the contractor submits shop drawings with the messaging that is defined in the project specifications for each location. We verify the, that the text will be appropriate for that sign location, and then the contractor proceeds with fabrication. So there will be one for Pittsburgh and-
And then I see in parentheses at the bottom, they all will have the sandstone base.
At the community parks, the major parks, Moat Park, Pittsburgh, and Fountain will have the sandstone base. The neighborhood parks would have the two columns.
This seems like an awful lot of money to make signs. And from looking at the signs, the, I'm guessing that the sign that's on this page, is that what the sign would look like? That is the sign that would be out there?
Those are renderings that are indicative of what the finished sign type would look like, yes.
Because the Pickwa Municipal Government Complex, roughly, how big is that sign?
Monument sign, and it's, I'm gonna say it's about four and a half feet tall and probably three and a half feet wide, roughly, I'm guessing, going from memory.
Because that sign itself's like $7,100?
So the, the sandstone base requires a CMU Concrete Masonry Unit Foundation on a concrete footer, so there's some pretty significant excavation and foundation work that has to happen to make it ready to receive a sign. And then the sign itself, these are all very highly durable materials and of high-quality construction. They're not a run-of-the-mill wooden sign that one might fabricate in their garage. They're pretty, pretty substantial in terms of the construction materials and types methodology. So it is, it is an expensive sign, but it's meant to be there for a long time-
How long?
-and to be very attractive for a long time. That's a really tough question to put an exact answer to, but it would be for decades, not just a year or two.
We bought a CNC machine for the sign department to make signs. Why wouldn't we not make our own signs? We have the equipment to do it.
This is, these are a lot different signs. We're only capable of doing a certain type of sign down there, which are smaller type of projects and so forth, which would not be part of the wayfinding system, so.
And this is the second phase. We've already done one phase with the downtown signage.
Correct.
So, which is very similar, obviously, to the ones that are on here.
What, what you would see installed in this phase would be very comparable to the quality and material types that you see on the first phase of signs.
Which continues the whole branding effort that we have been focused on with the city, trying to keep things connected.
Absolutely. Yes. And I should say, this, this includes quite a few signs. I mean, there's, there's a lot of signs to go in.
Yeah, looking at the quantity, we're looking at, I mean, some of these are 21 signs. I mean, we're looking at, I mean, I'm not, I can't add this up quickly, but we're almost looking at 100 signs with this, and my-
I believe there are 96 total.
96 total? Including the entrance sign to the city.
Yes, the one is a pretty significant gateway sign that is, includes hardscape, masonry wall units, and similar to what's on the infield of the off-ramp from the interstate.
So where would that specialty gateway sign be? Is there only one of them?
There is only one of them. It is proposed for US Route 36 as you enter into town on the right-hand side, and it would actually be an integral part of the landscape improvements that Ms. Kuhn just referenced. So right at the intersection of Scott and 36, it'd be in the, in the embankment, if you will.
But don't we already have two, is there two signs out at the interstate that say Pickwa, one on each side?
Northbound and southbound, yes.
Just one, just one, on the right side there.
Yeah, but it's the right side going north, the right side going south. Right?
Yes.
Going-
Is it on the north or-
Oh, you're talking about interstate, you're talking about, oh, interstate signs, okay.
And the other gateway signs will be at our smaller entrances.
They're, they're of a smaller scale than, than what we're talking about here, but they're still pretty prominent in terms of their, their vertical, and they've got a significant presence, and will do justice in terms of being a nice gateway feature.
All right, any other questions from the commission on this resolution?
Guess I'd be remiss not to say that I had had a few phone calls from people that didn't like the current signing, the first part, and one of the phone calls was from somebody that voted on it previously, a former commissioner. So, I mean, I, it's readable, I can see it. I do think it's a lot of money, but if it's continuing in the phase, and, and it's, it's phase two, and it's continuing with what we've got going, I don't, I don't personally have a problem with it, so.
Yeah, I like the fact that they're all the same, and it continues that, that connection within the city as we drive around.
Where all will these direct you to be able to go? And from where?
So the, the system is predicated on the fact that there are corridors that are your primary driving routes, arterials or collectors where the bulk of the vehicles travel. And so the signs are strategic in terms of the turning locations or upcoming turning locations to signal to folks that at the next intersection, you'll want to turn to go this way to get to the airport, or to get to a public park facility, and so on and so forth. So it's, like I say, it's citywide, it's a, it's a system of signs, no one sign stands alone. One may be leading you to the next intersection that tells you to go whichever direction to get to the destination that you might be trying to seek out. So they all work together.
Okay.
All right, any other questions from the commission? Any questions from our public on this resolution?
Since Commissioner Vogt brought up Pittsburgh Park, may I address Chris Casey and ask him a question?
It's listed as Sports Complex.
Oh, thank you, that was one question. It will not interfere with the statue. Is it going to be higher than the sign that's there, Chris?
I'm trying to picture what's there. It, no, it will not interfere with the statue. This is an opportunity for us to make sure the placement is appropriate, and certainly we wouldn't want to do something that would be detrimental to the, to the presence of the statue.
And is it two-sided?
Yes.
Okay. And then you said there'll be one then at the South Street location of Pittsburgh Sports Complex?
Yes.
Okay. Then Dos Park, the garden club, when they plant their flowers, sometimes it blocks the sign? Is the sign gonna be in the same place, or is it going to be relocated?
I think there's some conversation we need to have there.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, great. Those are my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve Resolution R-127-18.
Has been moved. Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Has been moved and seconded. We, let's have a roll call, please.
Mayor Heinz.
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt.
Nay.
Commissioner Martin.
Nay.
Commissioner Short.
Nay.
Commissioner Lee.
Okay, the motion does not carry. So we will move now to our next resolution. Resolution Number R-128-18.
A resolution authorizing a change order to the contract with Environmental Assurance Company Incorporated for the former Mose Lounge Asbestos Abatement Program.
Mr. Smeazing.
Thank you. This relates to the-
This relates to the environmental remediation work at the former Moe's building at 111 South Main Street. While performing the original scope of the work authorized for the former Moe's asbestos abatement project, the contractor discovered hazardous building conditions and additional asbestos-containing material that were not previously identified by the project's scope and specifications. To complete the project properly, it's necessary to authorize a change in the scope to the project to allow for an appropriate response to the hazardous building conditions and asbestos material that were discovered. As part of the change order, an additional layer of subfloor and underlayment will be removed from the main area of the second floor, and this work will be performed while utilizing fall protection gear. So it'll be a difficult and arduous process, to say the least. A change order request has been presented by the contractor and the proposed change in the contract amount accounts for the additional labor and expenses required to respond to the conditions that have been discovered. The fee to complete the work will be based on actual time and material expenses, not to exceed the quoted amount. So that is, we'll only pay for the work performed, and if they can get it done in less amount of time, then it'll cost us less. Authorization of the change order will allow for the remediation phase of the project to be completed, and with the demolition of the rear addition to the building already removed, the next phase, next and final phase of the work will be able to proceed. And that phase will include making the building ready for reuse. That will include the installation of a new roof and brick repairs, which will make the building weather tight and ready for renovation by an end user. As indicated by the staff report, the original budget for the work included $271,000. This is supported by a $200,000 US EPA grant. And so the original bid came in significantly less than the original scoped amount. So the addition of this change order will still allow us to be within the original budget amount and also allow us to utilize the full $200,000 grant. Happy to respond to any questions you might have.
So basically, this is not costing us more money than what we had budgeted to begin with, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from the commission?
Yeah, I have a question, Chris. Was this company allowed to go in the building before they wrote their estimate?
Say that again?
Was this company allowed to go in that building to look around before they wrote their estimate?
Yes. The contractors were given access to the building prior to bidding it. There was also a mandatory pre-bid meeting. No, excuse me, it was not mandatory, but there was a pre-bid meeting. They had gained access. The issue is that the, there's an asbestos survey that's completed to identify what materials need to be abated, and that's by a separate entity, that's not by the contractor. So we provide that information by way of the survey that that consultant completes for us. In the survey document, it identifies the asbestos-containing material in the top subfloor, but what it didn't recognize is that there was a subfloor buried beneath a subfloor. So it was, it would have been pretty difficult to anticipate that. As they removed the top layer that had been identified by the report, they discovered the second layer that was unbeknownst to anyone.
Okay. All right.
Any other questions from the commission on this resolution? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Move adopt Resolution R-128-18.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the resolution passes. And now we move to Resolution number R-129-18.
A resolution awarding a three-year contract for uniform rental and laundry services and mat rental to Centos Corporation.
Ms. Holtz Apple will provide the staff report.
Thank you. Blue-collar union contracts require that the city provide uniforms and laundry services for our employees. Department heads and supervisors have coordinated their needs with our purchasing analysts and through the state bid recommends Centos Corporation as the best provider and supplier for 2019 through 2021. The estimated annual cost citywide is not to exceed $50,000. Our power and water departments have used Centos fire retardant uniforms for the last three years and have been very satisfied. In addition, Centos also comes highly recommended by other references checked. Passage tonight will allow for employee measurements in November, five to six weeks to place and fill our order, and the uniforms would be received in the city approximately February 1st. Thank you.
Thanks. Any questions or comments from the commission on this resolution? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion for Resolution number R-129-18.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, the resolution passes. And now we move to Resolution number R-130-18.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to prepare and submit an application to participate in the Ohio Public Works Commission State Capital Improvement and/or Local Transportation Improvement Program and to execute contracts as required.
Mr. Shiel will provide the staff report.
Thank you, good evening. Earlier this year, staff applied to the Ohio Public Works Commission for a $200,000 grant. It's a 2019-year grant. That grant would be for catch basin replacement in 2019. We received word earlier this month that we are being recommended for funding. We were asked, however, by the Ohio Public Works Commission to have this resolution put before you to grant the city manager the authority that stated in the resolution. The specific language in the resolution comes directly from Ohio Public Works Commission and satisfies their legal requirements for language. They ask that this be returned to them by November 2nd.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission on this resolution?
And I think the plan is to replace, repair about 120 catch basins?
120, yes.
Great. All right. Any comments from the commission? Any comments from our public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Move adopt Resolution R-130-18.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the resolution passes. And now we move to Resolution number R-131-18.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to submit an application for federal FAST Act funds through the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission.
Ms. Hayden.
Thank you. This resolution would allow the city manager to enter in to, or actually apply for the federal funds through the Miami Valley Regional Planning Commission. This year, the project we selected was the resurfacing of Looney Road. We would like to go from County Road 25A all the way south to Patrizio Place, and a portion of it from County Road 25A to US Route 36 is in the county. So the Miami County engineer would also have a portion of this as far as our local funds. This would be, if awarded, available for state fiscal year 2024 spending. And right now, we have a cost estimate of approximately $1.8 million. We would be going for 75% of that to be paid by the federal government, which will leave our portion as approximately $303,000.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission on this resolution?
Yeah, how much design information do we have to give them for this to happen?
I don't think there's any requirement right now, is there, Amy?
No, at this point, we have not even began the design. We will have to hire that out. ODOT does require a very strict, like we did with Covington Avenue, a strict set of plans to do and to meet in order to get federal funding. But we have not even started that process until we know whether we will be funded with the grant.
Okay, all right.
Any other questions? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move adopt Resolution R-131-18.
I'll second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the resolution passes. And now we move to Resolution number R-132-18.
A resolution amending the contract with A to Z Property Maintenance LLC for the Sidewalk ADA Compliance Program, Phase Two.
Ms. Hayden.
Thank you. As part of our second phase of street resurfacing this year, which was in the Shawnee District and also along Keenly Drive, we had to go through and put in the ADA-compliant handicap ramps. Actually, as such, we did put in additional two ramps. The project manager noticed during construction that there was a citizen utilizing a motorized wheelchair, and it was adjacent to our project at the intersection of East Main and First. And that wasn't part of our project, but we went ahead and did include the ramps in there. We did notice they were having mobility issues trying to get through. As well as when we were doing all of the ramps in Shawnee, the majority of them, we had trouble finding decent concrete to tie into, and so we were not going to leave our ADA-compliant ramp tied into walk that wasn't in decent shape in order to be able to make it ADA-compliant. So we had to go back a lot further on a lot of these. So this resolution would be to increase the purchase order to $92,500, which is an increase of $8,000 from the previous resolution to be able to pay the contractor for this work.
All right, any questions from the commission? Do we have any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion for Resolution number R-132-18.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The resolution passes. And now we move to Resolution number R-133-18.
A more obligation to pay Applied Mechanical Systems for the emergency HVAC services performed at the Fort Pickle Plaza and into an agreement with Applied Mechanical Systems for the maintenance of the HVA system for the remainder of the 2018 year.
Mr. Grazer will provide the staff report.
Thank you, Gary. Applied Mechanical has been doing the HVA system at the Fort Pickle Plaza, and we had some extensive testing and determined why the chillers were locking out and had, then had to do some additional filling of the coolant that was there. So required $10,000 expenditure, which is greater than what we normally have during any one time. So because of that, it caused us to go higher than what we were going to have to pay for on our HVA system for the plaza. They were requesting a $40,000 budget amount. It's not going to exceed that amount. We probably won't use that full amount, but that is just to make it through the end of the year for 2018.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the commission on this resolution?
Is this just for the air conditioning?
Yes, it is. Since we've made those changes, it's been dramatically different, so we assume we're doing much better. It's not tripping out any longer and it's doing quite a bit better when we had the cooler temp, or warmer temperatures.
No, not last winter, we had a problem with the heat over there. We got that straightened out.
As far as I know, everything's working good now.
Any other questions or comments from the commission? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move adopt the Resolution R-133-18. Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the motion carries. Our next resolution, I am going to turn the meeting over to Commissioner Vote and step out because this does pertain to an area in town that I live, so.
This Resolution 134-18 is a resolution to vacate an easement and replat a portion of Deerfield Subdivision Section 10, plat and dedicate a new easement.
Mr. Smeesey will provide the staff report.
Thank you. This is in response to requests from the Deerfield Homeowners Association who desires to replat a portion of Deerfield Subdivision Section 10 with the intent of combining a 20-foot-wide strip of common area land extending to or from Whitetail Lane and combining that with an adjacent lot, and the purpose being to resolve an encroachment issue. And in doing so, they would be vacating an existing interior lot line utility easement that is not occupied and dedicating a new easement to reflect the adjusted lot boundary lines. The replat will also include dedicating a new easement, implant a new common area strip of land extending to or from the end of Park Avenue as it's currently improved, and this would provide access to the subject common area for both the public and/or for maintenance needs. Approving the resolution would allow for the Deerfield Homeowner Association to complete the property transfer and resolve the encroachment issue while maintaining the appropriate access to the subject common area. There was a public hearing held at the Planning Commission on October 9th. There was no one present to speak against the item. The representative of the Homeowners Association was there to speak on behalf of the item, and the Planning Commission reacted favorably in a unanimous vote recommending approval of this item. Happy to answer any questions.
You know, we have all these meetings for something like this and nobody usually shows up. Have we got any phone calls? Has anybody had any static or anything about it at all?
There was one neighbor who came to the office just looking for a clarification, and I believe that may have even been after the Planning Commission hearing. And once we explained, he really didn't have any further questions. So I wouldn't describe that as foregone, he was just interested.
Is there any downside to this?
I don't see any. The Planning Commission was dutiful in their consideration of it and referenced the preliminary plat, which is the master plan for the subdivision, essentially recognized that this is still, the replatted access point will provide the same, serve the same purpose as the original platted access point. And so there really isn't, it's one half dozen another. It's just changing the location.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't see a downside.
I move adopt Resolution R-134-18.
Second.
Do we make a roll?
Commissioner Martin.
Oh, we need public comment. Any public comment on this? Here comes public comment.
I'm Holly Trombley. I live at 2200 Wilshire Drive, and I'm the Secretary of the Homeowners Association. And I appreciate all the work and help that Chris has, none of us know what we were doing, so he was very helpful in what we needed to do to do it right. When Deerfield was built about 20 years ago, there was an area for each pond has a green space for access to the ponds. With the building of, and the growth of the development, there's an area there that two homes, side yard butts up into the backyard of someone else. No one has ever used that area to access that pond. We are looking forward to some maintenance that we're going to be doing around the ponds. We needed to identify very good, easy access to the ponds. Neighbor has built out and beautified that lot. They've taken care of that lot for the last six years. So we wanted to switch it to an area that gave us better access for treating the pond, for doing maintenance at the pond, and that's at the dead end of Park Avenue, which Chris mentioned. It gives us easier access to get both, the boat in and out and things like that. So it's not tearing up anybody's yard and easier access for the people that live there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Any other comments? I can entertain a motion.
We already have one. We already have it.
Okay, I need a roll call.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Short?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Amy, would you get the mayor?
Yep, okay. All right, do we have any public comment this evening?
Edna Stifel, 651 North Downey. I hear a mount of playground equipment that is missing from Pitts &amp; Berger Park. Three years ago, I went to the park for a park board meeting, and I was really appalled at the condition of the park, the playground equipment. It was, I guess the next year it was torn down. There's nothing there but a blank space with a bunch of weeds. This has been two years. This has been two years and still no playground equipment. This is the most visited park in our whole town. And we can't, we can spend money on all these other things, but we can't spend money to put playground equipment for our children. I have no grandchildren here. It's not a problem of mine. But there are children in this town that go to that park and they deserve park equipment. I said, we had the same argument with all the other parks in town until the neighborhood groups gathered together and we all fought for playground equipment. Well, now it's time that the southwest neighborhood is able to have playground equipment at that park. Eventually, I'd love to see two playground areas. One in the old, where the section was. There is playground equipment there for handicap, but not for everybody else. And we need park equipment there for the children. And then later down the road, I'd love to see another area down somewhere in the area of all the ballparks so that the little ones will have someplace to play because they can't be let go to go over to the other park, the other playground, because it's too far away. But I think that we owe this to the children of our town. It's a little bit ridiculous when we have a playground with no equipment. It's something very lacking in not caring if we let this go on. And I know it's budget time and I know Brian told us at the park board meeting that he's got it in the budget, but that's happened before and we don't see anything. I think it's time that the commission demanded that they put some kind of good equipment up there for those kids. It's time.
I agree with her.
Yeah, I was going to say, my understanding is that, because you're talking about Pittsburgh and Fountain Park. My understanding-
No, Pittsburgh.
Does Pittsburgh, okay. My understanding with Pittsburgh is they were moving all of that over to the special needs playground so they would all be playing together, which I thought was a great idea. And I know it's part of our parks' master plan. I don't know where we are on where, I know that was-
So far away from everything else. That playground is way off from where the ballparks are, everything. It's like, push the kids over there so they're out of the way. No, it needs to be where the parents can see them and they can have a place that's safe.
Well, and we'll have to look at the plan for Pittsburgh because I know there's reconfiguring in that plan of the fields and a variety of other things. And I-
I'd have to talk with Public Works to see where they are with it, but we'll do that.
Yeah.
But it needs to be done.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming up.
Any other public comment?
Good evening. My name is Larry Hamilton and I live at 1104 Maplewood Drive. The subject of my commentary this evening is the angry mob apologies and an inclusive historical heritage. On Monday evening, October 8th, we had our regularly scheduled PAC meeting of the Pickwa Association of Churches. Churches voluntarily agreed to host these meetings and I had volunteered my church for the October meeting several months earlier. The host church is hospitable and charitably agrees to feed the flock of gathering representatives. But not only does the host church provide drinks and light snacks to eat, but that church is also responsible for spiritual food in the way of providing a brief devotional message and opening prayer. Since we were at and in greater love, a church edifice constructed through personal donations and the collective will of individual leaders ironically blessed with the slave skills of the Randolph Freed peoples who labored in service to their community of believers to construct the building of our meeting place. As I began the devotion that evening, I told the church delegates that I wanted to share something timely and relevant to the place of our meeting. My talking points would be based upon a perspective on the observation and/or celebration of Columbus Day and the irony associated with our ownership identity as related to the Native American mural on Pickwa's McCulloch Square and the billboard to its left depicting a black woman with a historic figure of Paul Lawrence Dunbar in the background and having wording that I rephrased, "Can we trust you to care?" I shared PowerPoint slides and later asked my brothers and sisters in Christ why we are so comfortable in honoring and memorializing the men of war, but also nowhere do we find godly men and women taking a stance of peace in the public square. It was the next morning that I turned on the news and saw the president, who almost never admits sorrow or regret for anything but on that occasion issuing an apology on behalf of the nation for the historic wrong that had been perpetrated upon one man. Without knowledge of the past, coupled with denial and trivialization of historic wrongdoings against whole groups of people who did not have the benefit of trial by jury in the courts, it will be difficult to heal this nation. On behalf of those convicted in the courts of public opinion and whose ancestors testified to the immoral acts of extrajudicial terrorism by angry mobs, I raise my voice to ask again, can we trust you to care? I chose to extend ownership identity to a Pickwad who served as a model of behaving and acting differently, and his name is William Moore McCulloch. McCulloch was a different kind of politician, a different kind of American, and most importantly, a different kind of man in being civil, respectful, and honorable in the office he served. In closing, I would like to pay tribute to Pickwa's heroic congressman, William Moore McCulloch, by way of a poem I previously recited at a YWCA-sponsored event with attorney Mike Gutman of McCulloch, Felger, Fight, and Gutman. The poem is titled "My Kind of Man", and it was written by my distant cousin, Henry Allen Lane, who during his lifetime was referred to as Kentucky's Dunbar. My kind of man. The kind of man for me is one who seeks no praise for what he's done, who labors not for man's applause, but gets his share of praise because with an honest heart for right strives he, and that's the kind of man for me. Though highly honored, he does not scorn the honest rags of the lowly born. Good cheer and hope to all he brings, for he looks at the sunny side of things. His manly heart is as light and free as the morning breeze. He's the man for me. He knows a smile in a warm handshake, off from a stone a heart will make, from which kind words drive out despair and plant an honest purpose there. He looks for the good in men and he is the kind of a man I delight to see. Thank you.
Any other public comment this evening? If not, we will move to our city manager's report.
Just one item. We do have an opening on the Civil Service Commission, so anyone that would be interested in serving just needs to contact my office and fill out an application.
Thank you. Okay, we will start with Commissioner Vote then for our Commissioner comments.
Well, you know, we had Edna talking about the playground equipment up there at the Pittsburgh complex. Yes, it's needed. But I must say, we spent a lot of money up there last year redoing the tenants' courts that everybody's complaining about. I've only seen them used a couple times. You can only do so much and everybody has complaints and we do it and nothing happens. So I don't know whether the dragging our feet on the playground equipment was because we didn't think it was going to get used. I know it will. But then we follow with things that we've done and all we have to do now is nobody uses it and we just have to maintain it. So I don't know. I don't know what the answer to our problems are to get the people involved in what's going on in the community and using some of the nice things that we have for them because we receive complaints all the time about we don't have this and we do it, then it don't get used. And I just feel like, what are we supposed to do? I'm not putting anybody down or anything, but I just, we try to accommodate everything and then after we do this, and it don't seem like we get any response. So for the people that are complaining, ought to pay attention to what we do, then use it. That's what I'm trying to say. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Vote. Commissioner Martin?
Yeah, do we have an, I don't know what you would call it, an inventory and a date schedule of when all of our park equipment was put in? Where at, when, possibly why?
I don't know that we have a complete, we have an inventory of what's where, but I don't know if we know when some of it was put in. I think for the past couple, three years, we've gotten people certified on playground, being able to evaluate it. And we have had to pull out pieces because it wasn't safe and so forth. I do know they're working on putting playground equipment back in. I know Pittsburgh was talked about being put in. I don't know, I'd have to check and see what happened. But yeah, that's something that we certainly need to do and stay on top of. But there was some really old, old equipment that is not certified anymore and we're liable if that, if we leave it in. So that's what's been going on. It's just, I guess the question is, did we get it replaced? So we'll have to check that.
Okay, would it be possible for us to make a policy that says if we pull equipment out of a park, for whatever reason, we replace equipment and we do it within a lot shorter timeframe? That way, if something comes out, something goes back in.
I think if it is, in most cases, we will. But if it's a case where we're at a budget time, we don't have the money, then we might have to wait till next budget year. But we certainly want to try to get it back in. I'll have to find out what happened on this because I'm on this situation.
And I know that Fountain Park, one of the issues were the swings and swings were taken down because they were found to be too old. So I know that there's been quite a few issues.
But I'll follow up to see what's, why we haven't gotten some equipment back in those places.
Okay. Alright, thank you. That's all.
Playground equipment. Let's start with Kuanis Park. It was torn down by the city. Let's go, it was empty. Finally, the North Parks Neighborhood Association, we fought hard. We finally got the city to buy the equipment and we all got together and we erected it. We had the same thing at Dawes Park. They tore it all down and nobody was going to replace it. We fought again and we got the playground equipment at Dawes Park. The members put it together. At the Southview Neighborhood, they fought for it for Moe Park. And now it's time to put it at Pittsburgh Park. It's been two years since it was torn down. At least two years.
And I think we're all, we're all in agreement with you, Edna. We're trying to figure out where in the plan we are on this because I agree, it's taken too long. So thank you for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you.
Did you have something else?
Nope, I took it.
You're good. Okay. Commissioner Lee?
I want to congratulate all the President's Pride winners. Houses look great and they helped beautify the community. We want everybody to contribute and do the same. Edna, thank you for coming up and bringing it to our attention. I don't have kids that young for playground equipment, but I have lots of kids and I can imagine other kids would like to play and it has been two years. And if he says he's going to look into it, he'll look into it. We'll get something done about it. And that's all I have.
Commissioner-
Oh, I do have a question. City manager, for the city manager, where are we at with the Development Director position and the Law Director positions?
We're going to have to go out for additional time for applications. We only have like three or four for the positions. So we're going to extend the deadline for-
For both?
Commissioner Short?
I have nothing tonight.
Okay. I have a couple things just to share. The YWCA wanted me to let folks know that the Meet the Candidates Night will be Wednesday, October 24th. That's actually next Wednesday, from 7:30 to 8:45 at the YWCA 418 North Wayne Street. A representative from Forest Hill Cemetery will be there along with candidates for the US Representative for the 8th Congressional District, State Representative for the 80th Congressional District, and Ohio Senate District 5 will also be in attendance. The event will be broadcast live by WPTW and taped for later rebroadcast by Pickwa Indian Nation Station, Channel 5. Also, just want to remind people that the Pickwa Troy Game is coming up. It is going to be the end of the month. And as always, we are having our blood drive and Pickwa has taken the trophy home the past few years, I believe, and are ahead in the numbers as we go back and forth with that. But the US Bank Blood Drive will be October 25th from 12 to 6: and you can go to US Bank or the schools and you can get yourself registered to give blood that day. I also want to remind people on Indian Nation Station, on my Facebook, my mayor's Facebook page, and Indian Nation Station's YouTube channel, and I believe it's also on the city website. My most recent Eye on the City, I went out to the water treatment plant, our new water treatment plant, which has now been in existence for almost a year and a half. And I did a walking interview with Don Frightsteller and Bob Jennings out there just to talk about the water plant. Why did we have to do this? What are the things that they can do? And so I encourage you, if you want to understand where your water comes from, again, it is a gift that we have water every time we turn the tap on. And I will say again, as I have said before, we have some of the best water in the state of Ohio, if not the country. So I encourage you, if you want to know a little more about where your water comes from, you can check that out. And that is all I have. I need a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Still moved.
Second.
We have been moved and seconded. We are moving to executive session. Thank you. Oh, I need a roll call. That's right.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Short?
Aye.
Mayor Heinz?
Aye.
Commissioner Vote?
Aye.
Okay, we are moving to executive session.